Start serving on breakfast again. We had created a committee through research school start time and they will be presenting their findings in front of building and district leadership. And we started discussing about bringing students back on the morning announcements in high school.
Thank you very much. Um, any questions for Michael? Thank you.
Oh, Michael, um, you said a salad bar open. What was in the salad?
Um, I believe, I can't remember which group at start, at start, just farcism to designate a certain purely school to start working on it. I know, I'm pretty sure Mr. Maybe is one of the leaders of this group and it was a lot of fresh kind of roots. I can't, and I can't remember exactly what question they had, but I know it was, oh.
You get more information.
Okay. Congratulations, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Adriana.
Um, I'd like to motion to, um, before let's see, can take command at F one through M one.
Do I have a second on that made by Mr. Groden? Any discussion?
I'd like to remove, this is where I remove I nine in the consent agenda.
You would like to amend Adriana's motion to remove I nine?
I would definitely amend it.
So ordered. All in favor of the amended motion? So ordered. Um. Motion.
Um, I like the motion that we move forward with, um, the consent agenda. F one to the M one, removing I nine if you go down that as a sleep.
Do we have a second by Mr. Groden? Discussion. All in favor? So order.
A motion that we, um, report item I nine in the consent agenda.
Seconded by Mr. Rivera. Any discussion?
This is, um.
We're just as I know.
I know. We need a second motion to vote. No, right? All in favor? Any opposed? In favor, Linka Rivera, Jen Holmes, uh, Helen May. The only opposed were Ashley and Victoria.
And that was to.
I nine.
That was to remove by nine?
No, that was a vote for I nine.
So.
I saw your face. We're good.
Okay. So. The, um, people opposing were, I'm sorry.
Ashley and Victoria. So motion passes. Thank you very much. Um, that moves us on to information reports and discussions. Um, let's start with the key. A roundtable?
Oh, he says something different than roundtable.
I read the end part first.
Oh, um. I bounce here at the middle school book fair. I have to say that the middle school students were very polite. They used thank you. He's, I was very impressed with the little school. I believe that the, um. They made over a thousand dollars in profit. It was nice. Um. I attended voice that tripped one O one and social. There's a lot of, uh, community members there. And so, yeah, that's.
It's quick two weeks.
Yeah.
Mr. Groden?
I, I don't have any report except congratulations for an average of twenty two points in the season. We'll pick a plan to tune on the line with you and try and even keep up with you. So I wish you all the best. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Groden. This is, uh, I got it. Adriana?
Um, so today we held the, um, policy committee meeting that had been moved from our last meeting due to the ability to take a tour of from elementary. Uh, we discussed several policies. One is being for for fourth course, um, vote on night and will be in record for the future policy meeting. It'll be, um, to January fifteenth. Thank you. Our next policy on January fifth, um, we just didn't want to make more space for, uh, the tour of cook table that will hopefully be by straw hole later this year. I definitely had the most a little bit. I probably.
Uh, Helen?
Um, I attended the Sullivan County School Board Association's intermeeting. Very fun. Sullivan meeting was there. I also attended the state school P T S O meeting. Um, look forward to all the fundraising activities, their, of their planning and they are still looking for a secretary if anyone is interested.
Fantastic. Uh.
I guess we did, we did have our building.
Yes, we did. Uh, Linka?
Uh, congratulations to Mr. Feldman. It's amazing. Um, I'd like to also, um, just shout out to all of the volunteers. Uh, I was a volunteer at Chase Book Fair this week, um, in the afternoon. And I'd like to also give a huge thanks for anyone, all persons that donated towards the Chase U wallet. I'm not sure if anyone was aware, but, um, you could make a donation to either of the book fairs that would then allot children that came and bought books to then be given a book. So it was wonderful to be a part of that. Um, so thank you to the P T O, Chase P T O. They they organized, um, those volunteers. I also attended the family fun night yesterday that was put on by the P T O. Um, and it was great to do some, have some crafts for the kid, uh, during the parent teacher conference. We also visited the book fair. It was very successful. And then, uh, just a personal thanks to, I'm not sure. I apologize if it's, I say this wrong, but it's Amy Hale from, uh, Latin Photography. Um, she had, uh, family photos set up. So two very nice Christmas backdrops for parents and families to take pictures for Christmas. So, um, it was, it was really wonderful to see that. So, uh, shout out to her. It was wonderful, wonderfully made by the Chase P T Os. Had a great time.
Thank you very much, Linka. Um, Ashley?
I attended the Boy Scouts troop, I was social and, um, it was very, very popular. There was a lot of people there. It was amazing. And, uh, I wasn't able to stay too late because it went on until what ten o'clock or later, but I was there until about eight thirty. Um, but, uh, it's great that actually, um, was, um, conducted for the Boy Scouts to raise money for Boy Scouts. Uh, I also want to say that, um, I would congratulate Michael Feldman for that. They went, so good job.
Thank you very much, Ashley. Um.
I can be eighth grade class trip. They're planning the next three perks that they're having with Mrs. Nolan was very well done and we had crispy cranks for sale. We didn't know that. Someone didn't tell us that we had those for sale. So the eighth person raised a mind there.
Thank you very much. Um, I also attended the building committee meeting, um, Saint Todd, Helen and, uh, Jen. Um, we got a lot of, uh, important work done there, which was very nice. Um, I'd like to thank all of our staff. Um, support staff, teachers, bus drivers, everyone for getting our kids through the first marking period. Thank you so much. Um. Hopefully the next three will be just as successful. And, um, I forgot to mention it earlier. I usually say it at the beginning. If there are any students here that need to get, um, pages signed off for their classes. Um, my name's Tim Crumley. I'm running a meeting that's blank on your sheet of paper and anybody sitting at the table can, uh, sign your paperwork at the end of the meeting and, um, that should be good for, uh, your report that you have to send back to your teacher. Thank you so much. Uh, director's reports. Any questions, concerns or comments about director?
Yeah, I have a question on, um, the maintenance.
Steven Los's report?
Yes. Um, I do like the, I guess these are for the, uh, or I, I don't know. Shall we call these things?
Work orders?
Four quarters. Thank you. Um, when it says that it's closed, does that mean it's officially done?
I would assume yes. If it's closed, it's been addressed. Yes.
Okay. So that means that there's books in a hallway that are supposed to be accessed. They're gone. They're not just sitting there.
I would assume yes. It might mean that. It might be that. In most cases, it should be.
And then, and they're still sitting there. Then what? Do they do another work order for them for it?
No, they would, if, if the work order specified that they be removed, they should be moved. If the work order specified, they should be considered surplus. That's not exactly safe move them. So it depends on what is specifically.
Now, when he submitted a report, are we going to have this every month from him?
Yes.
Thank you. Um. My next question is for Miss Dr. Allmorn. Page two of the journey for from family involvement to family engagement. Have you, um? How do you plan anything to happen?
Yeah. So if you remember, we talked a little bit about this. I've given you a book, the Karen Mack book. Um, and so uh, part of it, it has to come from the buildings, right? And so each of the buildings have family engagement teams. Um, they have been trained, uh, the Karen Mac, that's the trademark. That was last year that training occurred. Um, and I do know that, that, uh, that they are, uh, getting their this year, they have to be, uh, developing number of initiatives within the buildings, uh, to, uh, to, to begin moving from involvement to engagement. We covered in the head, uh, building of the land presentations. Every building, uh, has a family engagement.
So does that mean like I, I remember reading something about, uh, flexibility with hours. So that means like when there's going to be a committee meetings, they're going to try to do them at nights of parents' finish plans?
Yeah. So I think it depends on the building, right? I think that, um, I, I know, for example, I'm going to use Mr. Palmer because he's here. Uh, you know, at his open house that he had earlier, he had, uh, solicited anybody that had come to open house to, to give information about, uh, if they would be interested in serving on committee, when, when would they be available for that type of work? Um, so they can really tailor, um, some of those opportunities for, um, parent schedules. And, and I do know that, uh, I, I can speak specifically to Mr. Palmer's group because I have been on a number of these building committees. Uh, and we, oh, we always have, uh, parents who involve this thing into, even if you have a in-person meeting so that we try to be as flexible as possible, um, trying to get as much participation as possible.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the, um, director's reports? Okay. Moving forward, policy committee memo, Dr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Crumley. So as, uh, this Mason Greco alluded to earlier, we had a policy committee meeting uh, at five thirty this afternoon. Uh, the board will be acting on a revised, uh, it's called administration of capital projects policy. Uh, tonight you'll be enacting that. Uh, we're acting on it and it would, uh, be adopted as policy. We will be coming back, uh, to the board for a first reading of a revision to policy zero one one five. Uh, that is, uh, the district's policy on student harassment and bullying prevention and intervention. It just has some minor updates, mostly legal citations, uh, but there are no significant changes there. Those recommended changes come to us from the New York State School Board Association. The policy committee also, uh, asked to bring forward, uh, a new policy, which is twenty three twenty five. Which would allow for video conferencing uh, of board meetings for board of education members in the event of, uh, extreme circumstances or some uh, you know, unusual situation that would prevent them from coming to the meeting. So the policy specifies what those types of extenuating circumstances would be. We would have to, uh, put notice up that, uh, the meeting is being video conferenced, which is different than live stream. For live stream now, video conferencing is like Zoom, right? Or, uh, Teams or Google Meet. And it would also, we would also have to allow the public to have public comment in that, uh, video conference session. So right now we're not required to have that because we're only live streaming. But if a board member were ill and wanted to attend by video conference and we had this policy in place, they could make that request. We would set it up and, uh, we would, you know, post prominently that link. So what needs to happen prior to that is we need to hold a public hearing. The board would need to have a resolution. Then you would follow your typical policy adoption protocol, which is a, a couple of readings and then adoption. So we're probably a couple of months away from that. Uh, the public hearing and the resolution might be as early as, as the December eighth meeting. I just need to look into all of the, uh, processes that would lead up to that. Okay. So, uh, it would, uh, give the board a little more flexibility than current state law. Under current state law, um, if you were to video conference in, you have to publish the physical location that you're conferencing from. And also have that place open for anyone from the public to attend as well at that location. So if that's your, the local library, so be it. If that's your living room, same deal. Um, you're not required to provide refreshments. So, um, that is in the works and I just wanted to bring it to your attention. We had some, some pretty good discussions around it. And then we're moving back as, as Mason Greco talked about, our next policy committee meeting to January fifth.
Thank you so much, Dr. Evans. Uh, correspondent outcomes, um, none at this time. That rolls us right around the capital project updates.
I have a question on policy. Um, I know that when you do the policy committee memo, like you say, we're looking at X, Y, and Z, but it's not available to the public. If it's not available to the public until after policy committee brings something forward, that would become available to the.
It becomes available to the public, uh, with the first reading.
Thank you.
So it should be, maybe if we look back a couple of meetings ago, the policy writing on that should have been in public.
Right. I just, that's, I can see things I we're looking at right now, which is community, public enough. I'm curious why that is.
Because you're, they, it could be foil, but we're not required to legally post meeting minutes of comments. So we have to post like there's a subcommittee, there's a board policy committee meeting and the agenda, but you're not required to to, uh, publish all of those supporting documents. But if someone wanted to foil that, we could. Or they could.
We got a policy? All right. Rolling down the capital project update. Once again, Dr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Crumley. So it appears that winter is upon us and that will, um, unfortunately slow up some aspects of the project. However, uh, we are in the final phases, uh, right now. Uh, our architect and construction manager are, uh, you know, working with our contractors to wrap this up before the end of December. They have, however, received word that there are delays in the panel manufacturers. So. You know, um, so it looks like the interior courtyard is almost done. But at the manufacturing plant, they are not able to keep up with the volume of the orders. So they are working with, uh, Pete was our, uh, general contractor to try to find, uh, solutions to that. Uh, the paving of the, uh, tennis courts right now is up in the air because of the weather. So they were scheduled to pave those, uh, this past Monday, the fourteenth. However, there was quite a bit of rain over the weekend and the weather got pretty cold. So I don't know if that is still an option between now and, uh, you know, the end of the, the year. Um, it may be, may be paved actually in the spring. Uh, that will be discussed at an upcoming uh, owner's meeting. Again, the board's capital project committee met on November eighth to discuss project or progress on this current project and also start thinking about what future capital projects might entail. Um, paving was, was completed at the new transportation center and that parking lot was lined. And, uh, I know there was a question about bollards and there are not going to be bollards. Um, but they do believe that there's enough space for people not to run into those electric, uh, charging stations. So, uh, we, uh, the fencing I saw was being poured today, or at least the, uh, piers, uh, piers for the poles, concrete, uh, was being poured today, spaces, spaces. Um. So it looks like that fence is going up very soon and we hope to have all of our buses back in that parking lot, uh, within the next month or two. And, uh, we are anticipating upcoming change orders. And again, some work, additional work that was completed in the one hundred, two hundred way of the high school that was to be expected. Uh, electrical work that, uh, was not anticipated in the one hundred, two hundred regular high school. We're, uh, negotiating that out with a contractor now. And also removal, removal of unusable soil at the new transportation center. You may recall about a month ago, they were still removing soil that was unusable. Uh, that, the initial plan was that that would be used. However, its compaction was not suitable for a new parking lot. So we had to remove that and get new soil in. So we're still waiting for that change order. Uh, so we're anticipating those the next quarter.
Thank you very much. That's Jersey. Uh, any questions? Mrs. Jersey?
So as far as the tennis courts, when you say that there's no paving or maybe no paving, does that mean everything else around it stops?
No. No, just the, the court surface itself needs to be paved.
Is it, again, you told it should be done. They're finishing the fence back. No one's moving the fence anymore.
No, but they are, some of that fence, I, I saw it today. Some of that fence has moved back around along the walk on Burt, on Brackey Avenue.
Right. I'm saying, as you're pulling in.
No, that, yeah.
Today are still trying to get rock there and it's unsafe.
Yeah.
They need to move the fence. They need to do something like.
Yes, they're already on.
They, uh, we have reiterated that with, with Chase, uh, to to find a solution there, especially once the snow starts to pile up.
They're already not walking their, it's ground so hard and even the little snow, they're out walking actually a little harder. So it's not something that you're checking, something that's happening. Like today I, I help people line. So a bunch of kids keep walking that wants space today. And it is age, some of the kids don't want, they just don't. They expect you to make sure that. No, so most parents are not paying attention. I would say that, but we're not. So it's, it is very dangerous.
Yeah. Well, we, uh, we recognize that in your work, Mr. President.
Any other questions on, uh, capital project? Moving forward to upcoming events, um, there's none posted, but I had an email. Oh, I'm sorry. There is a few, uh, posted. I have received an email from Janet. I asked her to forward it on to everybody. Um, there is a twenty twenty three legislative and state budget preview. It's a one and a half hour seminar. Janet's going to forward you guys that email. If you would like to attend, I believe the R S V P was by the twentieth of this month. Um, the seminar actually takes place on December fourteenth from noon until one thirty. It's a Wednesday. Um, so if anyone would like to attend, please contact, um, Janet as soon as you can, so she can get you signed up for that seminar. It's an hour and a half legislative and state budget preview. Sure. Fascinating stuff. Dr. Evans is going.
I am. It is best.
Um, I don't. Bring on to, uh, community events. Think the community events got up, into upcoming events. Um, if anybody have any, uh, community events that they'd like to say?
Uh, yes, just, uh, we have, uh, the Rotary Food Drive. It will be this Saturday that I know. Um, the interact advisors to man, and I've been working very diligently, big luckily. So just a big thanks to the students, teachers, staff, personnel, who've donated goods to our food drive that will be held on Saturday. And we have several volunteers from the interact club coming to support.
Where are you guys going to be on Saturday?
Uh, Ted's Children's Center. So if anyone has any turkeys, ShopRite turkeys that, um, they would like to donate, please stop by. We'll be there from nine AM to one PM. Um, and it all goes to help those who need it. So. Or just stop by.
Thank you very much, Linka. Anyone else? Moving on, um, Janet. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ashley.
Um, we, as we were already spoke of earlier in the meeting, but the, uh, the play Annie, the middle school.
Yep.
And also there's a Thanksgiving dinner that we've been having Saturday morning.
Where's that at? Your middle school, your, your middle school cafeteria, interfaith council. Thank you. Thank you very much, Ashley. Um, Janet, questions, comments for the public?
Yes, we have one name, Anthony LaRusso, Regan Security.
All right. Um, just give me a hot second. I have to, uh, read my piece. The Board of Education recognized the value of public comment on educational issues and matters of public interest. In order to prevent the fair and orderly expression of public comment, following rules shall govern and will be administered by the presiding officer. Please note that the per public comment period of forty five minutes maximum duration will be at the beginning of meeting and a period of fifteen minutes maximum at the end of the meeting. Either period may be extended by a majority vote of the board. Neither public comment period is a time for public discussion. If necessary, the community member will be contacted for follow-up. If you wish to speak, place your name, email, and/or address and telephone number on the sign-in list indicating the topic of your comments. Prior to making your comment, state your name for the record. Identify any group organization you represent. Comments are limited to three minutes or less per speaker. A speaker may not yield his or her time to another speaker in order to extend the time for comment. No speaker may comment on or identify any particular student or employee by name, position, or situation in this or comments. All comments are to be directed to the board president or designated. Holdouts into our petitions are to be given only to the board president or distribution to the board. Board will receive and consider all written comments. A memo will be placed on the agenda on the next meeting under information reports and discussions to keep the board informed of the outcomes. It will be titled correspondence outcomes and it will be a public document. Mr. LaRusso.
Hello, board. I appreciate you guys taking the time to, uh, hear me out. Um, Anthony LaRusso. I have to deal with my wife every once in a while. So, you know, give me a break there. But anyway. There's a couple of things I want to talk about quick. Uh, first is I agree with you guys when you talk about the fence. Uh, the fence is very dangerous. I dropped my kids off early and it's still dark out. So the fence really needs to be moved back like immediately because you can sit here and talk about it, but when a kid gets hit by a car coming in, then it's going to be done the next day. Instead of having it come to that point, let's do it now instead of having somebody get injured. Uh, second is, uh, there's a utility pole. When you drive into the school, it, you know, by the ball fields there, right on the corner of the road. I don't know if the plan is to move that back at all, but I'm a lineman for utilities and that pole is going to get hit by plows. It's going to get hit. It's right up against the pavement. I don't know what the final project that should be done there is, how it's going to look, but that pole, if it remains there, is going to get hit by a plow and it's going to break. Uh, third is security. When I attended the sports, uh, events at other schools, um, there's armed security guards there, contracted security guards there. Uh, we are what I consider the most inner city school that Sullivan County has. We don't have no metal detectors. We don't have no armed security guards at all. And I really think it's worth looking into because, uh, you know, if, if Tri Valley or Roscoe have armed security guards, which they do, I think that we're not looking into enough in security because, you know, I, I know education is very important, but the kids have to feel safe to be educated. So I would appreciate that, uh, you know, being looked into and I know everybody's going to say it's going to come down to money, but you know what? To keep the kids safe, it's going to cost money and it is what it is. I mean, you know, so, but. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. LaRusso. Anyone else, Janet?
No, good.
Thank you so much. Uh, moving on to superintendent update and information, Dr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Crumley. So, uh, we've, uh, just, uh, approved some new members to our faculty and staff and I want to recognize them tonight. First, Betsy Santiago, a new teaching assistant. Welcome. First, Betsy Santiago, new teaching assistant, welcome. Jennifer Peterman, who's a new special education teacher, Jennifer, is she here? Catherine Yaya Whaley Williams is our new director of student. Anybody else? Thank you, sure, and thank you very much. All right, so welcome, everybody, uh, and looking forward to working with you uh in service of our students' community. Uh, so assessing school climate, uh, earlier today, I facilitated our first student roundtable meeting uh with students from the Rapper J Kaiser Middle School right here in the uh uh in the library and I want to thank Ms. Dalton uh for her uh organization of the program. We had uh sixteen students attend, grade six through eight, uh, and the topic was school safety. Um, and though uh overall students felt, you know, relatively safe in our schools, they certainly provided us with feedback on uh areas for improvement. One of the uh things I was not, uh, honestly, I wasn't aware of, but I was, it was heartening to hear uh was how uh appreciative they were to have uh the security aides in our schools uh and the interactions that they had with security aides uh every day, just checking on them and how are they doing and kind of that informal big brother, big sister, if you will, my words, not theirs. Um, so that was really heartening to hear, uh, and they did provide us some other feedback. So uh, I kind of surveyed them just as a jumping off point and then we kind of have a uh uh further discussion after that. Uh, and then the high school one is in a couple of weeks and then I believe for December, we were talking about uh boot service, so more to come on that. I too attended the Sullivan County School Boards Association meeting with uh Ms. Jersey and Mr. Groden. Uh, they had people from Sullivan one eighty uh there to talk about some of the programs they do and they also mentioned the Cook Elementary Schools uh application for a competitive grant uh that would help create a staff wellness program. We are still actively seeking qualified candidates for a number of teaching vacancies. Uh, just today, I had another interview for a physical education teacher. Uh, we look close to uh filling some of the phys ed vacancies. But again, uh, special education, science, um, and school psychologist positions are very difficult to fill and we're not having any applicants at all. Uh, so we continue to try to fill those, but I want to thank, uh, there are a number of teachers, especially in our high school, uh, who are taking on additional sections uh in their schedules to cover classes. And I want to thank them for uh their work in doing that. Uh, and uh finally, relative to personnel, uh, we've conducted interviews for uh the assistant director of pupil cook personnel services and the director of uh phys ed, health, and athletics uh with some different faculty members and working with the Monticello Teachers Association and the Monticello Administrators and Supervisors Association. Uh, we've developed what we think is kind of a creative solution to uh filling administrative vacancies with existing uh teachers who are considering uh moving into administration and allowing them, you know, kind of time to do so uh and filling these administrative vacancies. So I really appreciate uh the MTA and and Massa for their partnership in this. Uh, and we think by the next board meeting, we'll have appointments for those two positions. Stay tuned for that. Uh, the Board of Regents had its monthly meeting earlier this week. Uh, and though I don't have a lot of particulars to share with you, the big highlight was their discussion, what were their discussions on new graduation measures in the state of New York? And they reminded us that they are convening a blue ribbon panel to review graduation requirements. Uh, one of the items that was discussed at the meeting was the value or necessity of having Regents exams as a requirement for graduation. So that might be something that uh uh would be discussed by the Blue Ribbon Panel. My understanding is that the Blue Ribbon Panel will be, make some recommendations and then bring those back to the Board of Regents. Um, we're probably, you know, you know, many months away from Board of Regents actually acting on anything. It's like probably a couple of years away from anything going into effect. So as more information becomes available, I will share those with you. They also had a presentation on the individualized arts assessment pathway, uh, which our high school is participating in. I believe Mr. Petzinger referenced that in his report uh this week, so uh we're excited about that opportunity. Uh, and last but not least, I want to thank all the Board of Education, education members and your families, a very happy and restful Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Um, sorry, I lost my agenda here. That moves us over to Lisa, Assistant Superintendent for Business. You didn't have any agenda, so they got a whole bunch.
Um, so yeah, regular budget status, faculty status, things on your school on prominent loss for the month of September. And the student activity quarter report during the period ending September twenty twenty-two. And a late add that I put on today is the tentative draft budget calendar for the upcoming school year for twenty-three, twenty-four. Highlights specific dates and meetings, it might be tweaked a little bit, but we're not acting on it until the next meeting, but I wanted to give it to you so you can review it. Now, any questions or concerns of these?
Any questions for Lisa?
I do, I have to call Lisa. Um, the high school traders' quarterly report, how far a class of twenty twenty-four has so much money in their account? I mean, it's like fourteen thousand dollars. And if the other classrooms, they don't.
Will that be the junior class?
Is that the year? They've done a lot of fundraising for twenty twenty-four?
I don't know, I mean, we have to get it.
I'm just curious, I mean, a class of twenty twenty-five had like ninety-nine cents, I mean, what grade? Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four, the junior. We love to find out.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm just curious.
We could speculate that it's a cluster fundraising.
Yeah.
That's aggressive and good.
Or they didn't spend anything, or they didn't spend anything, yes.
Because we raised money for the eighth grade classroom, so stuff during COVID. A lot of minds that were.
Well, it didn't go up, it stayed that, it raised money stays in the middle school.
So Dr. Evans will look in to see why that's that way at the present. Todd, did you have a question or you're just pointing to Scott?
And I said that you might have an answer in the present control of the audience.
Any other questions for Lisa?
Yes.
Uh, one second, Lika.
The uh Monticello Dance Co. have noticed this shift, their own thoughts. And that's because they just have not, they're not budgeted, they didn't raise any funds. Yeah, they haven't done anything yet. Well, that's another one, I'll have to find out what's going on with that.
Keep in mind, these are extracurricular, so it's not at the academic program.
Do you have another question, Vic?
Yes, on the September's quarter report, what was this check that was pulled? Yeah, so the checks didn't match. And always didn't match the purchase order, so if you go to the second page of that, it tells that out and has the difference. So I would have to actually go back to that warrant and find a specific check number, but it holds, I thought it reviews it, it has to match the P O and if it doesn't, she won't, so we pull it out.
Any other questions for Lisa?
There are a bunch, the uh net loss that we have posted for September. Um, are we looking to have more losses as we incur and? And are we trying to increase the quality of students?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that that was the general reason. We have to pay um health insurance, which on August, September, obviously, we haven't really had any for you the whole thing. So we had a pocket for money, so the first couple of months of every year, you're gonna see a loss and you're gonna start to see the fact.
Do you think that it's gonna be destroyed by savings that we're going to expect from our team management to come?
I mean, I don't think we'll run a deficit this year or with the second commodity that we are purchasing some equipment, so we might not break even, which is a
Would, I guess, do any of these numbers, are they different from years? I mean, I guess these losses are consistent with what we have every year.
And our hope is not to have this loss at the beginning, if we have implemented this increase in savings, because of the food choices that we established. Because we're trying.
Are you saying the health insurance payment?
I know, I understand they front loaded and then then it's pronounced, probably have the jobs from employees. But it's all about the overall savings that we're putting by implementing better foods and the choice that we're able to do here. We're cooking here rather than processing, they're ultimately way more expensive, so we need to go with spots. Thanks.
Other questions for Lisa? Thank you very much, Lisa. Uh, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction.
Thank you. So I'm asking the board to approve a contract slide. This is people in mind of York and this is for a program uh that we're offering as part of our enrichment after-school program with the School Bountiful Convention Program grant.
Questions for Lisa on People in Mind of New York?
I have, I have to just say that um the person facilitating it, um, I don't know what my life is.
You really shouldn't.
Uh, sorry, um, I, I think I don't know how to say it then, I, I just want to give praise, but I guess I'll just not do that.
We're excited to be working with this organization.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. But then also, thank you. Um, also, um, I see that this is for eight weeks, two times a week. Is it thought that this may be extended to another period of time after?
Absolutely, we were building out a uh first semester's program, um, and then we would look at uh, you know, enrollments uh in the various programs that we've done in um School Bountiful Convention Grant. Um, and then see what kind of program we would be looking at.
And then is this a maximum amount of students that you work with right now?
Uh huh, uh, yeah, but but I think we have a very, you've been approving contracts uh throughout the last few meetings to uh, to build out this program and so uh, we're seeing a good number, we should have at the next uh, at our next um curriculum and uh instruction board memo, you're gonna get a full report on enrollment uh activities in the School Bountiful Convention Program.
And and when does this start?
Uh, well, well, I approve the contract first, yeah, and we're gonna start uh fairly soon. Before, just before, um, let's say, who's a break.
Thank you.
Mrs. Jersey.
I didn't see it about.
Any other questions for uh Dr. LaMarcus? Thank you very much, Dr. LaMarcus. Brings us to the Ts. Hold the S real quick there, Adriana.
Um, I'd like to motion that we um consider action on P one through eight to twenty.
Seconded by Mr. Groden, any discussion? All in favor? So ordered.
I'd like to motion that we approve action in P one through the eighth.
Seconded by Mrs. Holmes, any discussion? All in favor? So ordered, thank you very much, Adriana. Uh, moving on to correspondence. Um, we don't have any posted at this time. Janet, did anybody sign up for the afternoon session of questions and comments?
Not, we do not have anybody else.
Thank you very much, Janet, which brings us to you three. Motion for adjournment made by Lika Rivera, seconded by Mrs. Galligan, any discussion, all in favor? So ordered, thank you so much, everybody.